Okay, good evening and welcome to the this stuff, sorry, the September, the September 10th meeting of the Town Meeting Study Committee for Concord. My name's Eric Moore, I'm the committee chair. We have a few people still joining yet. So I will pause for just a moment to take role. Phil, may I ask you to clerk tonight? You're on mute, Phil, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, would you be able to clerk tonight? Please?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta go get a legal pad then. Eric, I, you know, for what it's worth, I think we really need to rotate.
Sorry, I thought it worked. Yeah, I think we've had a bunch of meetings, so I think a lot of us have clerked already.
Let me, I'll go get a legal pad, hold on.
Good.
Okay.
Well, Phil, my apologies for dropping it on you. I think next time I'll send an email out for clerk. So again, sort of inconvenienced you that way.
Eric, I do a lot of meetings. What you should do is go through who's already been clerked and just assign people, and if they can't do it, have them trade with somebody.
Sure, very good. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go through and take role. Keith Bergman, please?
Present.
Katie Bresnik, please.
Here.
Kristen Hegarty?
Here.
I do not see Alice Kaufman. Eric Moore, present. Parashar Patel?
Here.
There you are, yes. Phil Swain? Present, and I do not see Eric Van Loon. So, okay, moving ahead. Our agenda tonight, public comment, two minutes at the most for a 15-minute period. Oh, we have a bunch of minutes to re-approve, unfortunately. We're gonna focus on, next we'll focus on the solutions questions in particular for the survey, but I think we'll also have a few other comments to address there. And then, planned survey next steps. I'd like to prioritize what we're gonna talk about this fall with a goal towards being able to review things that will make recommendations. So I'll talk about the timeline, but basically, my first order deliverable is the our check-in with the select board on December 2nd. And so prioritizing to sort of build our recommendations for that is item five. And then discuss the public forum. Who's our audience? What's the goal of the forum? Can we make some decisions about how to organize it this evening? So, moving forward to public comment. So a few members of the public on today. Would anybody like to comment at this time? Lindsay and Scott, that's, that's, is that Scott Gillis?
It is.
Hey, how are you? Nice to meet you. Please, you've got two minutes. Take it away.
Thank you very much, Eric, and good evening, everybody. In the 1996, 1996 survey, there were three questions I'd like to just highlight, although everyone probably knows these data. First of all, when the question was asked, do you think the votes accurately reflect the review of citizens? Forty-two percent of the respondents in the survey said no. When asked, do you think that the decisions that are made at town meeting are in the best interest of the town? Thirty-five percent of the respondents surveyed said no. And when asked if you would like to be able to vote privately, 27.5% of the people said yes. I have a couple of, a couple of comments. And I'd just like to share with you, with those with you, and that I'll I'll let other people chat. My first comment is I have been pretty liberal with sharing my views and writing to the Town Meeting Study Committee, and I want to thank you all for welcoming those comments and allowing them. I also want to say a special thanks to Eric, who has responded each and every time with his comments. And it's greatly appreciated to know that your emails are received and then you get a little bit of feedback on them. So thanks so much to that, for that. I have two, two kind of hopes, I guess. My first hope is that throughout the course of this and other meetings, the thoughts of other members of the Town Meeting Study Committee will be shared with us. You know, I have a really strong view of how Eric feels because of our interaction with each other. And you will know, you all know how I feel if you've read any of my emails. But I really welcome the opportunity to hear more from other members of the Town Meeting Study Committee. And then my, my final hope is that here in Concord, where we aspire to be inclusive and welcoming, that those who have the power to do so will do everything they can to make the people who would like to be able to vote privately at town meeting feel included and welcomed. And now with that, I'll say thank you very much and wish everybody a good meeting.
Great, thank you, Scott. Any other comments from the public, please? Okay, moving forward. So minutes, so I made a mistake, which is that minutes from subcommittees can only be approved by a quorum of that subcommittee. And so, subcommittees can also cannot approve minutes of the full, of the full committee. So, so we have a few sets of minutes to reapprove. I'm gonna ask as a point of order, just to be clear, that is it legitimate for us to approve sets of minutes? My research indicates yes, but if, if it's not correct, I'd like to be sure that we're that we're not doing the wrong thing again. My proposal is to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 4th, June 18th, and June 27th from the full committee. And then Carmen, I see you. And then to approve as a subcommittee, the, the, the subcommittee voters for the subcommittee minutes for the experiences and then for logistics. Carmen, please?
It's entirely appropriate to combine those three sets of minutes into a single motion.
Good, thank you. So I'd like a motion then for, for the full committee to approve for the full committee to approve the minutes of June 4th, June 18th, and August 27th, please? Sorry, Shannon, I see your hand. Let me acknowledge you, please.
Yeah, just after you do the full committee minutes, just to be super sure, you also should like open the experiences subcommittee meeting, vote on those minutes, and then close that meeting for the subcommittee ones.
Good, very good, thank you. So I'm sorry, I missed the motion to approve minutes for the full committee?
Approve the minutes from June 4th, June 18th, and is it July 27th?
August 27th.
August 27th.
Okay, second, second, please?
Second.
Great, I'll open discussion. Any discussion on these minutes? We'll move to a vote. I'll take the role for this full committee. Alice Kaufman is not present. Eric Moore, aye. Katie?
Aye.
Kristen Hegarty, please?
Aye.
Eric Van Loon is not present. Keith Bergman, please?
Aye.
Parashar Patel, please?
Aye.
Phil Swain, please?
Aye.
So, so approved by a quorum of the full committee. I'm now going to convene a quick meeting of the experiences subcommittee. Alice Kaufman is not present, but Eric Moore, Katie Bresnik, and Kristen Hegarty comprise a quorum of the experiences subcommittee. So we have now convened that meeting. I'd like a motion, please, to approve the minutes from July 9th and from August 7th of the experiences subcommittee. Aye.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from July 9th, 2024, and August 7th, 2024, for the experiences subcommittee.
Great, Katie, a second, please? Great, any discussion on these minutes?
Nope.
Okay, let's move to a vote, please. Eric Moore, aye, to approve. Katie Bresnik?
Aye.
Thank you. Kristen Hegarty?
Aye.
Thank you. We now close this meeting of the experiences subcommittee of September 10th and move into opening a short meeting of the logistics subcommittee comprising of Eric Moore, Eric Van Loon, who is not present, Keith Bergman, Parashar Patel, and Phil Swain. We have a quorum of the logistics subcommittee, again with Eric Van Loon not present. May I have a motion, please, to approve minutes from August 16th and from August 13th meetings?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I'll open discussion. Any discussion on these minutes from July 16th and August 13th? I'll proceed to a vote. Again, by role, Eric Moore, aye. Eric Van Loon, not here. Keith Bergman, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Parashar Patel?
Aye.
Thank you. Phil Swain, please?
Aye.
Great, so, so moved, minutes from July 16th, 2024, and August 13th, 2024 have been approved. And we will close a logistics subcommittee meeting, thank you, and move back into the main meeting of the full committee. All right, thanks. Moving ahead, chairs' comments. So we have a few things lined up. There's, we've scheduled a public forum to, you know, format to be determined for October 22nd in the evening. That's at the townhouse in the hearing room. We are expecting to report out to the select board on December 2nd. I, I've done nothing to communicate to the select board formally that we're gonna be on that agenda, nor do I know what the lead time is for the packet for the select board. So that's a detail I'd like to come back to. Shannon, please?
Yeah, I can help you out with that. I already have a placeholder with the board for that meeting, but I can get back to you about the packet stuff.
Cool, thank you. And then we've been invited and I've accepted to present the League of Women Voters First Friday Forum, Friday midday on December 6th. We have continued interest in meeting timing. I think, you know, one person finds the evening meetings to be late. Another person is not available on Tuesday evenings right now through the fall. I, you know, we've looked at scheduling a meeting during the day on Tuesday, and that, that's problematic for a few other people. I'm not sure what to suggest in terms of meeting timing, but I'll acknowledge this is an issue. I think, you know, what alternative perhaps would be Monday evening when the select board is not meeting? I'll send an email out about that and see if we can, we have any interest in that. I think a different option might be to meet during the day on Monday. I can send an email about that, but in general, you know, we've yet to sort of land on, on the sweet spot for, for this entire group. And it takes some time to sort this stuff out. So when you do see an email from me about, about timing, please follow up quickly, so we can come to, we can again converge on something. Parashar, you mentioned in an email that you'd have an update on the peer towns in a week or so. Is there anything that you'd like to say now, or, or we just wanna wait till the next meeting?
No, no, so the good news is, I think we sent out the survey to 16 towns. And we've gotten responses from all but two of them.
Cool.
So that was actually, I was pleasantly surprised, last minute push last night, and that turned up three or four responses. I'll tell you just, and again, I'll have the, I'll have a full analysis by the next meeting or next week, actually, but just cursory looking through the surveys as they came back.
Yeah.
Very, very clear that our level of participation in Concord is very similar to the towns we looked at.
Sure.
Number one, number two, most of them hold one meeting. Some of them have actually started electronic voting, so I think we've got we've got a good, a good set of information as to what other towns are doing, as well as how they're communicating. So I think it'll be, if nothing else, provide some context for us and for citizens, show them that we're actually, you know, probably very similar to other towns in terms of what we're doing and participation.
Good, so thank you. So I guess in time for our next meeting, two weeks from now, we'll maybe have something to look at and talk about?
Yeah, I'll circulate it before the meeting, so folks can, can take a look at the surveys, and then we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, thank you. Commission on Disabilities reached out to our, our committee to, to, I guess the word is liaise. And Alice Kaufman is, is the person, point person for coordinating with them. I don't have an update on that, but that's what that is. And then Eric Van Loon has been point on Home Rule Picture, and is not available tonight, so no update on that as well. I have one ask, you know, past meeting, I've been using the, the term, the jargon, I suppose, public administrators to reference both town staff, folks like Shannon and Carmen, though Carmen's an elected position, and also, you know, the, the board and committee citizen volunteers. I think, you know, the, the feedback was that that term is not descriptive enough. I think it's an important group in terms of the work of our committee, our, our remit, as it were. And so if anybody has a better name than public administrator, I'd really welcome that. You can send me an email, I don't wanna take time in the meeting, but I really wanna find a way to talk about this group of people in a way that makes sense to, to us and to the public. Katie Bresnik, please?
Not here to suggest a new name, but I'm wondering if there's any value in thinking of these two groups separately, or if it does make sense to lump them together? Just a question.
Sure. It's a good question. I don't have an answer for you. I think the, Carmen Reese, to you, please?
I, I would say that historically we have considered those groups separately because town staff is one group, they are direct town employees, and they have a different set of administrative responsibilities, and they report to the town manager. Whereas board, board and committee members are appointed either by the select board or by the town manager's office. Some of them have staff support, some of them don't. And we usually think about them separately, the board and committee members separately from, from town staff.
Good, thank you. Parashar Patel, please?
Yeah, and I guess just following up on that, I'm not sure what the distinction is between citizen volunteers and folks that serve on board and committees. I think they're the one and the same.
They are the one and the same, yeah.
So why not just go with town staff or public administrators for them and just call it board and committee?
Good, thank you. That helped. Moving forward. So I sent an email out about a fall timeline. This meeting now, the 10th, the meeting on the 24th, two weeks from today, to review where we're gonna be with the survey for Go Live. I think to do another round of planning in the forum. And I'd like to get us into talking about some solution to be, to be considered. I think when we meet in the 8th, we'll, should be able to get an initial look at what we're seeing back from the survey. Again, more work in the forum, and again, more work discussing solutions. The public forum on the 22nd, other meeting scheduled here for the 15th, which would be one week after. And I'm not quite sure why that is, but, but it made sense when I did it. And again, a meeting on the 12th, agenda to be determined. We're skipping election night. I talked about a second public forum. I don't think it's gonna happen in this timeframe, so I don't wanna spend more time on that. And then I think, you know, with the meeting with the select board on the 2nd of December, we should basically focus on making sure that we're all on the same page, and if necessary, voting on, on things that we're gonna put in front of the select board on the 26th. Katie Bresnik, please?
Just a thought for the, the 12th of November meeting. Assuming we're on timeline for the survey, that could be a time where we review the survey results. As a good time for that. And secondly, I was hoping we could at least start talking about solutions tonight, just to inform what goes in the final version of the survey and maybe finish up in the next week if that's at all possible with the timeline.
Right, right, right ahead, coming right up on the agenda, so.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you. I really set that up well, thank you. So townwide survey, we have a refined draft, which is now version seven. And, you know, the, the test here, right, are we asking about the right solutions? And we'll come to that. What do we need to gauge for ourselves? What evidence do we need to support our recommendations? What evidence do we need to make an argument to the select board or to town staff about something that we wanna advocate for in the timeframe of Town Meeting 24? And what should the public hear more about? And, you know, the, the bottom of my question, right, is anything else that we need to do before we hand the survey off to Shannon to build and, and to begin testing? So this is an outline of the survey. What I'll do here, Katie, is switch over to a view of switch over to view of the, the survey document, which means I have to fump for just a second to share screen. And to show all windows. Starting to sing the Word document coming up. Oh, there it is, good. Sorry. Okay, is this large enough to be legible for everyone?
If you can make it a little bigger, that would be great.
Sure.
You probably, get rid of the thing on the left, maybe, if you don't need to navigate by the headings, I don't know.
Sure.
But that, that's a, that's a little bit better.
Okay, that's gotta be a much better.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna just move this so I can see the comments. So we had a bunch of feedback on the survey, thank you for that. I'd like to go through relatively quickly, and then we have some things, some specific things to talk about. So Katie, you okay with me flying through and then, then I'll just go to you?
Yep, go for it.
One, one quick thought, I really appreciated the, the comments that Shannon kind of compiled for us. And especially the point about like, you know, brevity, let's make it as concise as possible, which I'm, I'm all for. One of the things that I found that, that, you know, maybe Eric Moore and Katie, you have brought up is kind of the reason for asking some of these other questions that I would normally just mark out. And I, and I say that because I, I wanna primarily get feedback on the solutions. But what I've noticed in my time on committees, and, and you've probably heard this in, when we get to town meeting, is everyone's like, well, we never heard about this. We didn't have any, this is not well thought out, you know, people react like that. And so I, I think one of the reasons we're trying to invest in the survey and really do what we can, you know, to hear in the forum, in the survey in a number of ways, is so that by the time, you know, recommendations happen, you know, people realize what's been happening over the time, their opportunity for input. And so I, I guess I just encourage us to think about that with, you know, Katie, you had really kind of clearly put, you know, this is why we would include each of these questions. And so again, I'm all for kind of getting ready almost everything for, except for the, you know, solutions, except that every time we talk about this, I, I hear really good reasons for keeping some of these other questions. So I just kind of wanted us to think about that as we're going through the comments.
Good, thank you. So to fly through, we addressed question two previously. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna recommend that we discuss it further. So question five. Cameron, hey, I see you. I'm just gonna read through your comments. And then Katie, I'll defer to you to discuss changes that you've made to this question in response to that. Cameron McKennitt's comments, you know, can we simplify? You, you came up with sort of five points here. We have much more detail on this question about different information sources. Part of that, from my perspective, relates to how we can gauge what people are really looking at, because then we can sort of identify where we wanna potentially focus interventions on. So if people are not looking at town meeting materials on the town website, for example, is there something that we can do to direct people more to the town, to the, to the town website? Are people going to committee meetings? We don't see that many, but I'd like to know that from the survey as well. Katie, do, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, and maybe just to clarify what we're seeing. So the red text here, I believe, was Keith's comments, or could be Parashar's, I, I think it was Keith's. But I did, I appreciated the comment that Cameron made, and I actually like, think that's a, a reasonable simplification to reduce wording. So unless anyone is set on those specific items or that granularity, I am very open to simplifying in the categories suggested.
One question that I would have is do we want to understand what takes place prior to town meeting? Like, so for example, the only question is, is that, you know, says, read the Warren article. Well, sometimes people do it at town meeting. Do we wanna know, is that something, kind of how much do they do prior to town meeting versus what do they do at town meeting?
Good, thank you. Keith Bergman, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to put in a pitch for keeping the, the level of specificity to, to some extent. I'm, for example, I'm, I'm very interested to know how many people actually attend the town meeting preview meeting, which is a thing. It's, it's done early on in the process, and seems to be very important, but it's not, it's on a Saturday morning and not many people attend, and it's, if it's part of, and, and so that's just one example. But I, I, I think that since all people have to do is check off on, on question five, check off those that apply. It, I, I think it might be helpful to put in a, a, a long, a, a list that's, if not this long, you know, maybe somewhere between. So thank.
Good, thank you. Parashar, please? You're on mute, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Take it from the top, please.
I didn't put my comments down, but I'm wondering if it would make sense to group these almost in chronological order? So the things that happened before town meeting? And then maybe the Concord Bridge and a couple others towards the end, just so that sequentially people think about it that way.
Good, thank you. Carmen Reese, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that you have watching the recordings of board and committee meetings or public hearings. There's also a recording of the town meeting preview meeting, so I might just add that to the recordings question.
Thank you. So, so I, my, my personal preference is that we keep the detail. I, I don't know if we wanna vote on this, or Katie, what, what do you think?
I mean, yeah, I don't feel, I don't feel strongly. I think when we can simplify, we should, but it, it sounds like folks are interested in the details here. So, and, and maybe there's one or two that aren't as important, but it sounds like folks are interested in keeping this, is what I'm hearing, unless anyone feels very strongly that we should simplify, I think we keep it.
Okay, thank you. Cameron, let me just check in with you, any?
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing I'm gonna die on a hill over, it's just surveys.
You want that, buddy?
Surveys get long, you, you wanna get to the important stuff. I would just ask, what are you gonna do with the information? So, hey, the town preview meeting, we know how many people come, because we have the meeting. So asking people again to survey and saying, well, this many people said in the survey that they come, I just have no idea what you would do with that information. So it's, like, so just, I, it's just trying to be prudent and trying to, trying to simplify, that's all.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it might alert some people in reading the question to know that there actually is a town meeting preview meeting. Because it's one, it's one of the great kept secrets, I think.
I just learned right now that there's a preview meeting, so I am now informed.
Yeah. Phil Swain, please?
So I actually agreed with Katie's opening comments that we should do what we can to make this more concise and brief, even if, keep all these questions, but do whatever you can to shorten it. And I, I will say this for all the questions coming up. The longer it is, the less participation we'll have. The longer it is, the less participation we'll have. So whatever we can do to shorten each question and shorten the overall length, the better, if we want to get more responses.
Good, thank you, Phil. You were referencing Kristen Haggerty's comment. So question six. Cameron McKenna's comment was, we're mixing a bunch of stuff up, can we simplify? Katie, you took a pass to revise this question.
Yes, so I took that comment. I think that was a really great point. This kind of evolved from many things into one place, as you clearly noted. So did a little work creating these two separate concepts. One is specific about town meeting and local government. And the second question about actual their experience at town meeting. Also took the opportunity to simplify the list of things about town meeting into things that I think, like, for example, your comments about difficult to attend in person incorporated a lot of the different items themselves, so just stuck with that to keep it simple. So this is a a second pass and tried to keep in mind some folks' comments from earlier editions of the survey. For example, trusting the work done by boards and committees was one of the items that Kristen was specifically interested in, so kept that in here. But yeah, so that's how it ended up where it is right now.
And again, with question seven, you did an editorial pass in that as well. With the with the same ideas.
Yes, I reorganized both of these and tried to simplify them a little bit based on the comments, which I appreciated.
Right. Good. So any red flags here with question six and question seven at this point?
So the the only question I have, Katie, is what, when do we ask for like a true, so it's like, almost like an absolutely true, you pick it or versus a Likert scale with to what degree do you agree with the following? I would say this is faster. But I didn't know if people's responses differ. I don't know that much about that kind of level of questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on our level of interest in that granularity. I think this is right now a way to kind of gauge whether people are more on one side of the scale or the other versus that granularity. And ultimately, that's probably how we would look at the data as a yes or no type of thing, which would just mean more coding of data on our end to get it into categories anyway. So I think this is a simpler, unless we really do care about that granularity, which I don't think we do.
Okay, no, I thank you.
Thank you. So so I hear no red flags raised on these questions. I'm going to move forward.
Oh, maybe can I just comment one thing that I just remember? I added a comment here for question seven, option J, I believe my vote at town meeting should be private. These are all kind of worded in a way that is more focused on being a barrier. So I I thought maybe we could change the wording to be more in line with that focus in something like I'm uncomfortable voting when my vote isn't private. I think that might fit in with the wording of the question a little bit better, but I just wanted to check with folks here.
Parrishar, please, yeah.
No, I'd like that Katie to keep all of these as barriers. The first one is a positive one, but I like that wording that you just said.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? I agree with your your edit, Katie. Good, moving forward, thank you. Yeah, Keith Bergman had a question about why are we highlighting enterprise funds and and that other things? I I think, you know, perhaps, Katie, it's simply that we just say presentations about conquered funding mechanisms and not 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 focus on enterprise funds.
Well, I think I added the enterprise funds because I think this is one of those, you can remember, like, as Katie mentioned, we kind of bastardized some of the questions and they got changed over time, but what what I think I was trying to recommend in this section was that people understand the differences between what is being asked. So maybe maybe it's not enterprise funds, but so you know, there's there's presentations about each motion. So how would presentations about conquered funding mechanisms be different? So is there a way to kind of qualify that so people understand the difference? And and the reason I say that is because there's a lot of things that people are just going to get approved. And sometimes we still go through the most, the whole presentation happens, you know, we, but even though they're going to be overwhelmingly approved, but they're not quite on the consent calendar. And and so what I've heard was that something like that is an opportunity to provide information, because everybody's in the meeting at the same time. And so I guess my question is, you know, is there a way we can maybe describe what that is in a way that people might say, oh, I see this is a little bit distinct from something else. And it might mean that both of those need to be qualified, presentations about each motion versus this. So Keith, you might have a better description about, you know, if if we can kind of call something out differently here.
Do you have any magic words here, please?
The the thanks, I think it would be helpful, a a distinction that occurs to me is the portions of the budget that are sensitive to the property tax and and those that are not. Now, that's maybe too nerdy, but in fact, the the enterprise funds are typically funded by the users. And and I I think they're, I think they're important. In fact, I think we need to see have more information at town meeting, discussed about enterprise funds, especially in a year when rates are going up thirteen percent because MCI closed. So I just wanted to, I I I was think I was thinking that it would be helpful to have information, more information about enterprise funds, but I didn't want to put it out there, something that people think, no, it's going to take too long, I don't. We've never spent a lot of time on it, so let's not. And I would just want to say, I think we should spend time on it at town meeting. Thanks.
Good, thank you. I see three hands up. Carmen, please.
So just a little historical note on this issue. It's less the funding mechanism that is important to people, I think, than the town service that is provided and the cost associated with the town service. And historically, the League Women Voters has been particularly interested in making sure that not every enterprise fund, they're always approved, but making sure that not every enterprise fund goes on the consent calendar every year and that we rotate which ones are not on the consent calendar so that town meeting has an opportunity, at least periodically, to have a presentation about various of the enterprise funds. And in certain years, some of them are more compelling than others because of issues that that particular enterprise fund is is facing. And I I'm typically thinking about those issues in selecting which one doesn't go on the consent calendar. And then, of course, any ten people can take any one of those enterprise funds off the consent calendar for a full discussion and deliberation and a presentation if they would like.
Good, thank you. We have a lot of detail in our discussion around what what we hope to be a pretty simple survey question about, you know, talking about where the money comes from and where it goes and what it costs to borrow. Katie, please, and then Parrishar.
I think Parrishar was first. Do you want to go first?
No, go right ahead.
I guess my comment is like, a lot of this lingo is not familiar to me. So I think even a novice reading this is not really necessarily still going to even understand what enterprise fund means or conquered funding mechanisms, or remember what part of the meeting that is referring to. So I think there's still be, could be some work here in describing in layman's terms what they are. Is just my thought, and I'm not sure who the right person to do that is. I could review it and tell you if I understand it, but would be, would love to get more feedback.
Let's ask Parrishar, our former FinCom Chair.
Yeah, let me, let me try wording here. Presentations about town services funded through user fees. And then you could put in parentheses, E G, water and I guess water and sewage, I think, probably, I just want, that probably gets a point across.
Electricity.
I just learned so much.
Electricity, that's good. Do you want me to repeat that again, Katie?
I have presentations about town services funded through user fees. Example, water, electricity. Thank you. Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, moving forward then. So Parrishar, you suggested deleting this paragraph because it's redundant relative to the other stuff.
Yeah, I think the only reason that I like at least having something in there is that these are all potential solutions and not like something we're definitely going to be doing. So having some disclaimer in there that like, they can't expect that all of this is going to happen, but we can do that in a more succinct format.
Good, thank you, Katie. I defer to your judgment on that. So Cameron McKenna's observation was that some of these things seem like they're they're things that we, you know, they're to use my language, they're no brainers, right? Yeah, we want to do that. And I think the question, you know, so why do we need to ask about it? And I think you know, he flagged a few of these things. And so I'll ask, you know, again, using the rubric of of is it things that we really need to get the public's judgment on? Is it things that we need to be able to present evidence for? Is it things that that the public is going to ask about? Are there things that we can drop using any of those or include using any of those criteria? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to raise my hand. But I'm wondering if I was thinking like, it would be great to get like an initial read on how folks think about each of these items, because some of these might be no brainers to some people, maybe all of them. But I'm wondering if we could even use like the hand raise and go through each one and is like, if we are leaning towards that being a good idea, if all of us think it is, maybe we just don't even, it's something that we are, we don't need to ask about maybe, or if no one thinks it's a good idea, then we should def, we should scratch it from the list. Something like that, but not an official vote.
I'm thinking about that. I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that. I I think it makes sense to not ask about things that are obviously bad ideas, but I think we've gotten rid of those. And as well. Yeah, I'll, I'll, so Kristen, I'll go to you, and then Carmen, please.
I mean, the only only thing that I can think, but I I mean, I I can appreciate that because I think we want to make sure that we didn't miss any potential solutions so that we can, you know, get public input on it, but also that we have, we have selected the the most important ones. I guess one of the things that we want to think about, what are we going to do with this information is, you know, are we, are we okay with deliberating on this group? If we get half the people say they want a meeting on Sunday afternoon and half the people say they want meetings, you know, during the week, how are we going to kind of decide how we're going to make that recommendation?
Yeah, we don't know that, do we? Carmen, please.
I just want to note that I've definitely experienced being wrong in assumptions about what the public cares about and found the answer in a survey to be different than what I thought. And I'll just give you one example. It, when I was on the select board, it seemed to me that being able to provide food at town meeting was really important, and we jumped through a whole bunch of hoops when the new high school was open to try and figure out a way to offer food, because it was harder than it had been in the in the old high school. And then when I became moderator, we did an exit survey, and one of the questions we asked was how important is having food at town meeting, and nobody cared.
Thank you. Cameron McKenna, please.
Yeah, so I just, so to me, that I think most of it looked good, right? So my first comment was just, I actually think there was a piece that was redundant, just because we say in one place include more items on the consent calendar. There's also another place where we say shorten the meeting by having more items on the consent agenda. So.
I deleted one of those items.
Yeah, that's all. That one just felt too explicit. And then the second one to me was just sort of like, felt a little bit like, well, you know, hey, have an updated and easy to follow warrant. Well, okay, I mean, isn't that what we strive for anyways? Like, that that didn't feel like a different direction that we would take. Based, based, no matter what the answer is, it's sort of like, make the warrants updated and easy to follow. So that was.
You know, I I thank you, Cameron. I think, you know, the question I have is is, so that that particular one is an operational impact, has will have some impact, I believe, on staff workload. And I think, you know, if if I believe, and so if if there's an appetite for improving it from the public, then it's a clearer motivation for for allocating resource on the staff side or or through the select board to to improve it. So that's a, that's a case where I'd like to be able to make, I'd like to have evidence to support an argument, even though I I feel like it's, yeah, we want to do that. One thing I would like to add, actually, is that we ask, we ask about scheduling on a Sunday, I believe. I think I think that we need to ask about scheduling on a Saturday. I recognize Saturday as a Sabbath for for at least one group. But I think I'd like to understand if having meeting on a Saturday would actually have a material impact in terms of potential turnout. I think I don't, I don't know how to, you know, resolve the question around, you know, it being a Sabbath day. But I, again, I think I'd like to gauge the town's appetite for turning out on that day. Katie, what do you think about that?
I think that's fine, I mean, fine, fine by me. We can see what folks, what the community has to say about it. I know that's been the reason of the past, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the reason we we shouldn't ask about it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. On this page, any other discussion around these items before I move to the second page?
And one thing, just, if we're going to ask about Saturday, should we just ask about a Sunday versus afternoon? I know my afternoon because church services are on Sunday mornings.
Yeah, you're right, exactly right.
That's gonna be like, oh, wait a minute here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I had the same thought, I forgot it, but I think you're right. So to hold town meeting on a Sunday or 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 Saturday or a Sunday would would be the, maybe they should be two separate questions.
I would keep them as two separate, please.
Yeah, yeah, we keep them two separate, but eliminate the afternoon part is what I'm suggesting.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Moving ahead to the second page of solutions. Yeah, I'm looking for the speaker norms one, actually. Is that here?
Yes, it's under experience.
Yes, it's under experiences, the highlighted one.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
I had, I had a question about enforcing speaker norms, even though I I introduced that word. And we're talking about free speech, right? So so is enforced an appropriate word here?
I would think it is if it's something like a time limit.
Sure.
Well, I mean, are we trying to get more of the civility thing? Because if so, I don't, we're, it's, that's going to be hard to get at at the, at this survey level, but I didn't know what you meant. By by norms.
We're looking for salience, civility, and and minimizing repetition, I would say.
I wonder if we should keep those things in a parentheses here, that way folks know what we're talking about. So repetition. Salience. What was the third point?
Civility.
Civility.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll ask maybe Carmen her thoughts, but if we're posing this question this way, it implies that there's an issue happening over time, town meeting on these topics, which I don't find to be the case. So my question is, if there's not a problem there, why are we asking about civility and all of those other things?
I can answer that, Parrishar. I think, thank you. You know, from what I've read from the folks who are the petitioners around clickers, I think part of, part of their motivation, if I I'll express it correctly, is a, is a feeling of incivility at town meeting. And so I think I think there, there is at least in one quarter a concern about it. I don't want to rule it out. I think it's, 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 you know, that's what they're saying. So so and, you know, it's interesting to look at other town meeting sites where they do talk about, you know, guidelines for civility and expectations around civility. So I don't want to say it's a capital P problem for the whole meeting, but I think I think it's always an issue in in a forum like ours. I'll go to Kristen Haggerty and then Katie Bresnik, please. Thank you.
I, and I think it's a little hard to get out in the survey, but I I think it's a, I think it's a big issue. I think that in the years that I've been going to town meeting, I I've seen many changes over time. And I'm hoping that, you know, some of the recommendations that can be made for this for town meeting and town governance and community building even hopefully gets us back to talking more together as opposed to talking at each other. And so I guess one of the things about this question might see if other people do see, detect a, a difference or a problem. You know, like you're, in your case, you would be like, nope, you know, it's fine for me. And I'd be like, way, way on the other side.
Well, I guess the question, if that's the case, Kristen, I appreciate that. Maybe that's a question to be asked that way. Is do you feel that this is an issue? If you're, if that's the issue, if that's really what we're trying to get at, directly ask that question.
Yeah, and I would, if we did, I would probably frame it in the positive and, and I'd have to go back and look at what our scale is. I can't remember. Or, or may, I don't think it's like a barrier necessarily. I don't know that people stop coming because so I guess I think it would be an experience thing, you know, like.
So what you're saying, sorry to jump in, but is that one of the items under Q, Q seven might, might say that, that I feel there's a lack of civility at meeting. Do I agree with that or disagree with that?
Well, and I wondered, I wondered if we should be framed in the positive, right? You know, like
Sure.
It's, it's a civil place to be. We have good discussions or, you know, so that's the way that, but it, I, to me, it does have something to do with experience.
I don't disagree. It's just again, this implies that it's not that way.
Yeah, yeah.
So in any case, I've said my piece on that.
Good, thank you. We're, yeah, we're, we're getting a little bit behind here. So Katie and then Phil, please.
Two comments. One, I think for Kristen's thought there, I think it probably does fit in the barriers. That's the best place for it in the current version of the survey. So I think adding in an item there to get at that point. Two, to Parrishar's point, I, what, I'm not sure exactly what we would, what Carmen would be able to do necessarily for enforcing some of this. So I do wonder if there is actually an intervention that could be done. For me, I think the biggest issue is, is repetition of points and that's a place to cut down on time. But I'm, I still, I mean, it's a hard job to, you know, figure out what you do about that in practice. So I guess, yeah, there's some subjectivity here.
Phil, please.
I really just concur with Katie. Repetition and salience are both a problem in terms of the length of the meeting. I know it's hard to enforce, but we should ask about it somewhere, whether it's here, question seven.
Good, thank you. Moving forward, I think Cameron McKenna had this comment around this particular item. Maybe, maybe it's not worded clearly enough, but we have different pieces of paper, so to speak, that represent the FinCom recommendations, the select board recommendations. Those are separate from the warrant. I guess the select board recommendations go out in the FinCom report, if I'm, I'm correct about that. But the goal would be that, that, you know, in the briefing book, so to speak, for town meeting, that everything that boards have said about the article or motion in question is right there on hand. So that's the idea underneath that. And it reflects a lack of integration at this point. Phil, are you, are you still, is this a, a new, a new, a new hand for you? No, Parrishar, please.
Yeah, so I think that challenge is the warrant has to be mailed out. You can correct me.
Yes.
Time, we don't have all the recommendations from FinCom Select Board, so.
That's exactly right.
Recommendations and a brief description of each warrant are published in a finance committee report.
Right.
So just FYI, it's a little bit of a challenge, but presumably one could, you can make it available electronically after the fax and now. Then adds additional burden on the town staff out of time of stress.
Exactly right. But I think it's a thing that we want to investigate. Cameron McKenna, please.
Yeah, so no, I, I mean, it's not that I'm like, again, you know, to me, it just, I'm not sure what's different about that versus what we do today. So you were trying to articulate some of that, Eric. So if there is a thing that's like, hey, this is different, I just, to me, felt like it was what we already do.
Got it. Keith and then Carmen, please.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the problem that, that that we could solve is the fact that the, the warrant, which is posted, you know, earlier in the process, exists in one publication and the, and the recommendations and the motions exist in another one.
Right.
In fact, sometimes the motions exist only in handouts. But, but that my, my strong desire would be to see a consolidated book prepared. Actually, there's no getting around, we need to do two publications. First, get the warrant out when, when it's posted. Secondly, would be the pre, the pre-town meeting publication, which here, up till now has just, just been the finance committee's report and a rather quick summary in a table identifying which articles are going to be on the consent calendar or whatever. I think what, and, and so at town meeting, the difficulty is, I've got I, the book of with the articles on one lap. I have the finance committee recommendations in another while I'm holding countless motions that, that have only been produced in handout. And we can, and I, we can do better than that. The, the town I managed for 11 years, Littleton, did, did better ultimately, and he's continuing to do it and publishes few weeks before town meeting, a consolidated document which went, which has the finance committee's report. It has the, the article, followed by the recommendations of the finance committee, select board. And then the motion and an explanation in plain English. And so as
Thank, thank you. This is a big, this is a big item for us. We're going to spend some real time on this. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to finish, I'm going to finish the thought though. And, and it is just to take from, for the purpose of proceeding at the town meeting. If all a voter has to do is turn the page when one article ends, to see the next article, collection of, of the article, the recommendation and the motions, it's going to be a much more easy to follow town meeting experience. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. And again, I think we're going to spend some real time in this in a subsequent meeting and that there's some real operational questions around there. Carmen, please.
I just have a question about what is meant by an updated and easier to follow warrant? As a survey recipient, I'm not sure that I know what that means.
Should I answer, Eric?
I'm, I'm thinking about a survey recipient and what, if, if the wording should change.
Yeah, I was, I was intending it to be.
Yeah, right. Go ahead, Katie, please.
I think I would, when I was reading this, I was thinking this to mean what Keith is discussing is this document that's easy to use and know what we're talking about, but maybe there are different words for that.
Cameron, did you have something? I'm sorry, I didn't see if you did or not. Uh, no, that's okay.
I mean.
Okay.
So i- i- if I may, then I, I think that needs to be reworded. But the other observation I would make, and I know you're going to address this later and you don't want to take too much time on this now, but Littleton is kind of an interesting example. If, if, if there is a better briefing book there, it would be interesting to see whether it's actually resulted in any change in attendance at town meeting.
Interesting question. Thank you. I'm going to move forward and Katie, I'm going to defer to you on any edits that you want to make with that.
Okay. Keith, I might reach out to you maybe for some suggested wording so we can make sure we're reflecting the point correctly.
So I want to come to a big question for us. The question around using a clicker voting. So Cameron, I, I read your comments about this. I rewrote the question. I think this is the new wording. I think, you know, we may format it a little bit differently. I assume you've had a chance to read through this now. Does this satisfy your, your sense of it being a fair, fair question at this point?
Not really. I, I mean, I just, I don't understand, like, starting with the first sentence, electronic voting does not offer a clear time advantage. I mean, I'm not sure how you can say that that's a neutral statement. There's a lot of towns that would present data that is contrary. And so I, you know, I don't, but, but again, like debating, debating what our personal opinions are on the question isn't like, how do we ask something that's very neutral?
Right.
When I read it, I'm like, well, we start with something that says, well, this might not be legal and has to go to like a state vote. And then we say things like, again, like, you know, it would add cost and complexity. I'll debate that all day long with you about whether it adds cost and complexity. I don't think that's a true statement. But I think we should be neutral.
I'm trying to figure out how to follow up with you on this. Parrishar, please.
Yeah, I agreed with Cam. I mean, I agree. That's why I was suggesting rather than pros and cons, just practical implications. What does it mean? I suggested a couple that in there, there may be a few others, but keep it simple and brief. And particularly, I, I'm confused by the way we talk about clickers, your neighbor might not be able to see how you vote. Well, they won't be able to, but also I'm not sure what the next sentence means. When it says unless clickers are used for a secret ballot, your recorded vote may be less private, like.
That's true, yeah.
What does that mean?
Oh, so for example, right, you know, I, I don't know the details of public records here, but you know, for example, the voter registration database is, is a public record. I was able to get a copy of that.
Sure.
Right? You know, if in, in a representative town meeting, the practice is, is that those votes are logged and reported. So, so if in fact we are not using a secret ballot with clickers and those, those votes are locked, they're categorically public information.
Well, I guess I would push back on this, Eric. I guess the question is, what gets logged? Is it simply that there were 200 voters there and 150 said yes and 50 said no? Or actual names associated with each vote? And I think that's an important distinction. So we don't bias folks one way or the other. I don't know the answer. But until we know the answer, we ought to be, we ought to, I don't think we should pose this unless we actually know the answer.
I, I do know the answer.
The answer is that unless you link the name of a voter with a particular clicker, every clicker has an, has its own identification number. And indeed, that's one of the security measures of these RFD electronic voting systems that the the system will, you know, the brain, if you will, that is, is counting the votes will only recognize clickers whose numbers have previously been entered into it. And that prevents somebody from buying a clicker on eBay and showing up at the town meeting with four of them and putting in four votes, right? However, if you haven't linked the name of a voter with a particular number clicker, then there's no record of a, there's a record of a vote for a particular clicker, but there's no voter tied to it unless you've done something to link the voter to it. And, and I think that some towns do keep track of what number clicker a voter has gotten in part because they want to make sure they get the clickers back. But some towns don't. And, you know, when we did our experiment, we did not do, make any connection between the voters and the clicker numbers. So you have choices about that in terms of the anonymity. It's certainly true, you know, the statutory restrictions on the ability of representative town meetings to take secret votes. So if they're using electronic voting, they pretty much have to use, you know, record their votes such that you can tell what representative made what votes. And, and that's doable. You can do that. But it doesn't have to be that way for open town meeting.
Right. Good, thank you. So it depends, right? Katie, please.
Yes, so I think like for these questions, although we do want an educational component, I think we need to keep the text super slim or we're going to lose a lot of people. And I had trouble myself reading through these items and I'm obviously interested in this topic. So I'm almost thinking we need to have like two to three sentences for each one and that's all. So I think we do need to find a way to slim this down to the bare minimum of information to provide to do an informed vote.
Okay, thank you. Phil, please.
So I agree with Cameron's comments that we need to make this much more neutral. And one practical reason to do that is because I think if the proponents of the clicker electronic voting article at this past town meeting were to see this question, they would go berserk. And we would get in a lot of trouble for, you know, skewing, trying to skew the responses. So I, I agree with everybody, it should be shorter, but also much more neutral.
Good, thank you. Parrishar, please.
Yeah, and this reminds me, I just had a conversation with the Wellesley moderator this morning.
Yeah.
And I had been viewing this as clicker, no clicker. They're, they're a representative town meeting, but to speed up their meeting, he basically uses clickers only if there's not, if it's overwhelmingly voice voted, it looks like it's going to pass, they just go to voice. And then for the closer votes, he'll use the clicker. So the point is, maybe we should, when we rephrase this, put in a notion of some or all votes or something like that to make it clear. It doesn't have to be that way. You don't have to use their clickers for all votes.
Good, thank you. Okay, let me ask the question. Who's going to rewrite this question? I wrote this. I'll contend that it's factually correct, but I think someone else needs to take a pass at it. Who will take that? Carmen, is your hand, please?
If nobody else will do it, I'll do it.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you.
Can, Eric, can I make one other comment?
Sure.
The word pilot.
Yeah.
Even that's suggests that it's not a permanent decision. It's just a experiment for this question and the next.
Yes.
And I also think some people don't know what that means. Like, what does it mean to pilot something? I think we should use something simple. Like, should Concord use clickers? Should Concord for remote voting, should Concord seek to have to use remote voting or something like that rather than pilot? Just because it's not, I don't know what it, some, I know what it means, but I think some people would say, I don't know what it means.
Good, thank you. Cameron, I think your hand is new and then Katie, please.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I just, I agree with Phil's point. And also, I just, to me, this, I don't know where it sits right now, but I, to me, I think this question should be separated from the questions that are not, that, that, again, so leading with that, to me, this first statement is not.
I agree. I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I, I thought that was addressed already, but this is a red flag.
I would just like to see this, hey, here's a thing that, you know, 70 towns plus towns are doing. Let's talk about that. Okay, here's some other things that are actually not, you know,
Good.
That required state legislative changes.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Good point. Katie, please.
First, this, this item of clickers, which I actually don't even love using the word clickers because people might not know what clickers, what that is talking about. So I think keeping electronic voting might make sense. Secondly, this originally was in the solutions table because this didn't require a legal change. And we thought we wanted to provide some additional information about it. I'm wondering if we want, would want to go back to including this in the table of solutions. Versus having a lot of context and then having a little bit more information about those items that do require legal changes. I know, Eric, you, you were originally on the, the page of providing some additional context and information. But I don't know if we want to revisit that.
Parrishar, please.
I, I agree with that, actually. That makes a lot more sense, Katie. Just because everybody, I think, will understand the term electronic voting. And, you know, as we just heard, you can have complete anonymity and privacy with electronic voting. It doesn't, it's not forced on us to link. So make it just simpler, add it in as a solution and limit the discussion of the next two questions.
So Parrishar, thank you. I, I think, I'm not convinced that this is a good thing for meeting. I'm not, I'm not convinced that we should be able to have a secret ballot in meeting. So, so to me, it's not a settled issue. There are good arguments for privacy and I think there are arguments against it as well as a legislature. So I, and I think, and you know, the discussions that I've, I've seen around, around clickers lean into the question around what does a secret ballot mean for a legislature? So, so to my perception, it's not a simple question. It's like, oh, should we be able to have remote voting? Of course. But there are consequences for that in terms of the way that the, the function of a legislature. in terms of the way that the the function of a legislature works as well. So, so I don't see it as a really simple, like, it seems like a good common sense solution, but I think it's something that has, you know, downstream, that has collateral impacts. And that's why I feel that the context is important for this particular question. That said, you know, I'd be very interested to see what Carmen comes up with and and if it helps us move forward with that. Um, Katie, please.
Um, I guess I would like to reframe the solutions table as not necessarily things that are kind of no brainers that we would do because I agree that clickers aren't like necessarily a clear solution for me. If we use clickers for all the votes, that probably means the meeting's longer and that's what I care about most. Um, and so, uh, like some context is helpful. Um, and I think we all have different views on it, but yeah, it it's not a clear cut issue, even if it's in that table.
Good, thank you. Uh, Kristin Hegarty, please.
I agree with what you were saying. I think what I've heard from some folks is that they'd like more transparency. Um, and, and so, uh, just saying yea- yea- nay to uh electronic voting really doesn't get at what issue it's trying to solve. Is it trying to be? So we were addressing ways to make the meeting shorter. I think the electronic voting is really the the privacy thing, which, I mean, if perhaps we can do something more with civility or talking to each other more, maybe that becomes less of an issue. So it is not as straightforward, kind of just exactly what you said. I'm just in support of that. I don't have a solution for this um survey.
Good, thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna move forward. I'm very concerned about time at this point. Uh, and the point of action is that Carmen will will take a pass at a simpler version of this. Uh, so, uh, remote voting during town meeting. So, so this question, uh, I think, uh, so Katie, I'm looking at the time. I'm looking at the granularity of the comment here. I think Keith, you made a good point here. Uh, I'm gonna ask Katie uh, if she feels that this question needs to be rewritten.
So I, I took your version of this and I kind of simplified it into something that I would understand into like a short paragraph here. And I'm trying to now just refresh my memory of Keith's comment. But I tried to keep the information as simple as possible and not like overcomplicate it.
Right. Okay.
So I guess it would be open to whether people think this is insufficient, or Keith, whether you think we should add um some more information.
Uh, Carmen, please. Uh, you're on mute, Carmen. I'm sorry.
So I am. Um, I uh apologize for not getting comments on this uh, to y'all before uh this meeting happened, but um, but I do think we need some rewriting on these questions. And I'm delighted to take a crack at these two, um, taking into consideration the comments that have been made so far.
Okay, um, thank you. So then as a point of action, then Carmen, you're gonna review and potentially rewrite Q twelve and Q thirteen? And um what about Q fourteen, the representative town meeting question?
I could do that.
All right, uh, please and thank you. Uh, Phil, uh, question?
Just a quick comment. So, again, I think that these are the, the intro is a little skewed. For example, on remote town meeting, we say, no town has been granted permission by state legislature. Makes it sound like it's an outrageous question. No town has ever done this. In fact, there are a bunch of towns who have petitioned for remote town meeting and that's pending. So if we're gonna say something, we should say status. And other towns have petitions pending. So it shouldn't make it sound like we're the first one and it's outrageous that we're even asking.
Well, fellas, uh, folks, I've a lot, I've a lot to learn here about writing these kinds of questions. So it's been very interesting this way. I think, uh, yeah.
The same people who petitioned for this in the last time we are gonna get upset about this, this wording. Uh, and so it's another reason to, to make it more bu- uh, neutral. So that, you know, we don't have a problem with them thinking we're trying to skew the answers.
Uh, fair enough. Thank you. Um, so I think actually with with that, we've gotten through uh the survey discussion. I'm gonna stop sharing and go back to the PowerPoint uh, so that we can uh resume talking about next steps of the survey. Uh, and so to do that, I'm gonna seem to have lost my Zoom window.
Maybe while you're bringing that up, I can just comment on the last question um that Phil was discussing. Um, I actually wrote the the wording in that way to make it clear to the reader that it is hard to do and that's why we don't have it yet, but not necessarily not meaning that it's biased and that we shouldn't do it, but uh giving that that's your read of it, I think a rewrite definitely um, sounds like it's in our best interest. So appreciate the comment.
Good, thank you. Uh, so survey next steps and uh uh, David, I'm gonna defer your question. I'm sorry. Uh, and I'll, I'll try to make time to come back to that. Um, so survey next steps. So, so we're now at survey version seven, uh, and it looks as though uh with the rewrite of the questions will be at survey version eight. Uh, but um, uh, Shannon is is volunteer to uh, build via Survey Monkey, build the survey. I think Shannon, uh, you could proceed, uh, you know, it's, we're gonna be looking at different text for those, for those four questions. But I think to build the survey and then to to drop in new text, uh, to me seems like it might be reasonable. Um, I have a few questions about how the build is gonna go. Uh, I'll suggest and hope uh that uh looking at your schedule of being offline on the twenty sixth, that perhaps if you could build up an initial version of the survey in the next week, then uh Katie uh could take a look at that. Uh, or I could take a look at that. I I have questions about how to access the data uh from the survey. And the big question as well is, is once you're offline, who's the backup for during survey edits? Uh, we don't need to take your follow-ups in line in the, on the, on the meeting now, but those are, those are top concerns for me. Uh, additionally, how might we test the survey? Uh, it could be friends and family. Hey, did you understand the survey? And there are a few details like getting a URL for the final survey uh that we can use or QR code or both that we can use to to fold into the survey mailing. A second topic are around the survey next steps. Again, it comes back to Shannon, uh, getting a postcard template uh, so that we can figure out what the word count needs to be uh for the, for the uh mailing. And then some timeline stuff around deadlines for print-ready postcard. Uh, and again, who's, who's the backup for the mailings? Uh, and then third, I'll, 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 I'll give folks a chance to comment and ask questions. Uh, third, um, uh, so, so I've communicated with Celeste at the bridge and uh she's indicated interest in doing uh, 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 an interview uh with me. Uh, also the possibility of uh, 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 and a sort of a statement from the chair. Uh, and then, you know, the, the timing for the requirement that, that we'd have to sort of do ra- letters round robin, so to speak, to to get it, getting editorials in. I didn't actually get the timeline in terms of if you want to get something out on the fourth, how, when does the letter need to get in, but we can follow up on that. But so there's gonna be an opportunity uh, to communicate uh, uh, through the bridge for, for a, a few levels. Uh, and then I think, you know, we need to come back to who's gonna be talking to which groups when. So that's the snapshot of the survey next steps. Uh, Shannon, I'm gonna go to you first, please. Uh, and then we'll go to Katie.
Yeah, I think I can run through some of these things pretty quickly. Yeah, I do think I can start building the survey um, within the next week and then I can sit down with either you or Katie to go through um and test it just like one-on-one. The survey URL, I believe that that's customizable in some capacity. And then Donna is going to be the backup for um this committee while I'm out. So that includes just like logistics for the committee and she will also have the login to the Survey Monkey account and will be able to pull data as it's coming in um and be able to share that with you all. And then the only other thing I wanted to touch base on, um, for the postcard mailing, does the committee want to approve something before it is sent or does the committee consider that um, an administrative manner that I can just take the lead on from a, a former template?
Um, I would say it's administrative. Uh, I would ask that you uh uh, pass a copy over to Alice Kaufman. Uh, as not, not a committee, but just as a, a person on the committee to, to, to comment on that, given that she's leading the communications.
Yep.
Uh, my interest isn't, and you know, knowing, knowing, knowing what the box is in terms of the amount of copy that needs to go on the, on the, on the postcard.
Yeah, and so I can certainly send it um out to the committee too, and you can respond directly to me with any comments that you have, but I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to have to wait on a formal vote of the committee.
No, I don't think so. Uh, that, that would be, that would be a lot even for me. So, good, thank you.
Sounds good.
Good. Um, uh, Katie, please.
Um, so I was thinking I can turn around a next ver- of version eight of the survey um with the first, the majority first half before those additional questions kind of cleaned up, finalized and pass that off to Shannon. That way there are less changes that need to happen within the Survey Monkey. Um, and then Shannon, I can work directly with you on um, any questions or building it or whatever, um, help you need. I'm happy to help support that and serve as any backup if that is at all useful.
Good, thank you. Um, so Shannon, do you have any outstanding concerns?
Sorry, could you repeat that, Eric?
Uh, yeah. Do you have any, do you have any outstanding concerns? Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, so I've not taken time for, for public comment. Uh, there are a few folks that, that I suspect um would have some things I'd like to say. Uh, but I'm also looking at our hard stop at eight forty-five. Uh, so I think what I will try to do uh is move quickly through uh the next two topics and then uh come back to public comment. Uh, uh, and I hope that that works for everyone. So the, the question is, you know, how do we figure out what we're gonna be talking about uh this fall? Uh, and you know, as we talk about solutions, you know, our potential solutions, right? Basic questions, right? What, what would it improve? What's the impact? How would it work? What's the effort involved? Who needs to approve that? What are the big unknowns? And so as we look at our meetings throughout the fall, it's what are we gonna be talking about at what meetings? Now, I went through, I, I wrote um a, a long document summarizing all those solution ideas that I was aware of in a structured form, and that's in the, the packet. Um, I summarized those into a, a Word document in tabular format and I put them all in an Excel format. Uh, uh, and then finally, the thing that I talked about in the previous meeting was this business of what I thought if we had to sort of propose something right now, what I thought in my working opinion would be the things that we would focus on. So, so this uh visualization is from the spreadsheet. Uh, and this represents, you know, potential solutions. Um, who's in, who's potentially involved in approvals or implementation, select board, town or staff? By town, I mean, you know, uh, uh, budgets or staff operationally, boards and committees and moderator. And then, you know, uh, this goes back to the visualization that Katie and Kristen had early on. You know, sort of what's the, what's the impact and the cost uh, uh, for these things? And uh, high impact and low cost is great. And again, the focus is on, you know, here are things that um, could impact town meeting twenty-five. So weighted forward, things that are part of town meeting twenty-five. Uh, and then, you know, looking at things, you know, focusing on, on what we can deliver into this, propose into the select board on December second. Um, so this is the rev- the, the visualization I constructed to help us prioritize. And the discussion, and I hope we looked at this, uh, and the discussion that I'd like to have is what do we need to be talking about over one, two, three, uh, for the next four meetings? Uh, uh, and um who has some proposals? This is, this is my first cut. Who has proposals for what we should be talking about over the next four, next few meetings? I think, uh, uh, Kristen Hegarty?
Oh, um, are you say, uh, you asking for like individual line item proposals or like package proposals?
See, how do we, how do we build an agenda for our next four meetings and the things that we're gonna talk about? Right? So, so for my list, right, we should be talking about how to make family accommodation work, right? Or how does, what explicit public norms or debate actually work? What would that be, right? These are kind of design-centered, right? This briefing book thing, what, what exactly are we talking about for format? You know, how would it work, both in terms of the sequence of, of hard copies that go out? Uh, you know, the, the warrant as a, as a, as a public notice, uh, the FinCom report following that, and there's, there's a lot of stuff in that. Uh, and then what would that look like online? That's a, that's a nuts and bolts, how would it work kind of, kind of conversation. Things that, sorry, things that, you know, we're gonna require a debate, right? Are we, are we sure? Is this right for Concord? You know, the question around clickers, right, or electronic voting. Um, we should have some clerk input for that discussion, though, that, that don't necessarily need to be at the meeting. Uh, and clearly, that's something we want to coordinate with the petitioners so that we can, we can get their input on that, in that meeting. Um, so tha- that's what I'm talking about, right? When do we talk about family accommodation or or not?
I guess, yeah, I guess I would say we would want to start with the things that are gonna have the biggest input, impact. And, and then move to the ones that are the like nice to haves. Uh, if we can get to it. And I, I mean, to me, the part, and I mean, with everything that we talked about with the survey, oh my gosh, if it's too long, nobody's gonna do it. Agree. Kind of like town meeting. If it's too long, nobody's gonna do it. So to me, I think we should be talking about what are the things that help town meeting to be, you know, as, as concise as it can be? And look at those impacts first, because for some reason, I just feel like that's the big showstopper with many people committing to the whole time. And then kind of do the, the next tiers. So that's how I would look at it. Like, what are the biggest impacts to the, like, oh, it'd be great to have this, you know, if we get to it.
Great. So, so um, get you in a second, Katie. Um, so impact, high impact, right? Um, this spreadsheet shows, you know, is the impact purportedly in terms of accessibility? Um, uh, or, or meeting time? So that's not in this particular view. But the, both the, the Word document with the table uh and the full spreadsheet has it information in it. Uh, again, this is, you know, high impact, modern impact. And then the cost in terms of either expenditure or effort as a sort of a first order uh prioritization, again, around things that could happen for, you know, time for time meeting twenty-five. Um, Katie, please.
Um, before Kristen even said anything, I thought our first topic should be, what do we need to do to make the meeting shorter? And having a session where we talk about which of these items will reduce the meeting time. Um, because I do think that is the ultimately what people care about.
Right. So, um, so then what you'd say, I think I need to change the view here. Uh, so you would say then that uh shorter meetings would be the thing, the solutions for shorter meetings.
Shorter overall length of the meeting.
Right.
And maybe Perashar's work will tell us whether that's like a reasonable thing to be looking forward to, or whether that's something that's just not accomplishable. And then in that case, what do we do to make it better?
Okay.
Let me tell you right now, most of the towns that surveyed try to end their meetings by ten thirty. And I think Carmen, correct me if I'm wrong, our time has been typically eleven. So that is, I think, one thing we should seriously look at.
Well, but I think the total time is like, what, twelve hours, Carmen? Like, or, you know, how many?
Yeah, about that, about that. That was the last meeting, yeah.
I think it's, for me, it's not necessarily what time the meeting ends, but how we can have not three nights, for example. Just leaving the house for three nights is almo- is basically impossible for, with having young kids. Um, so I don't mind staying up later, even though I don't like to stay up late, but I don't want to go for a fourth night. Definitely not. I couldn't do that. And three nights is really hard.
Yeah, and it appears a combination of consent, consent, various of the consent agenda, limiting the time per person and then cutting off the debate around ten thirty or so seems to get most folks into groove of one, maybe two to three meetings. Three is really rare. One to two is what I think. Groove of one, maybe two to three meetings. Three is really rare. One to two is what I think. Folks are doing.
Other one is to use marquee. Sure. Okay, thank you. Carmen, please?
Yeah, just a response to Parishar's question. Our typical motion is no new business after ten PM. The select board starts with that. And and that does in general have us finishing up by ten thirty. We don't make that motion on the third night typically so that. We don't have to go to a fourth night, you know, however long it takes us on the third night, we're gonna get done on the third night. And. You know, in my recollection, other than special town meetings, the only time we've been able to conclude. A town meeting in two sessions is when we have started on a Sunday. And if we've gone on a Sunday and done a very long session, we've been able to conclude it on on the following Monday.
So so Katie, thank you. So your proposal was we we begin with solutions and time for time meeting twenty five. That shorten the overall length of meeting. And so that would be the top priority for solution discussion. It seems to be the vibe. And my guess is it will have multiple nights of that or multiple meetings of that. What would be your second priority?
For me, it's probably family accommodation. Other folks might feel differently, though.
Arashar, please?
My my counter was about where it says research, propose and review how it would work. I I would urge us to be a little bit. Careful is not the wrong word, but don't feel that we need to. Put down explicitly how some of these things would work. Because I for two reasons. One is if. The goal is to suggest some preliminary topics by November or December. We don't have to have everything. Done. And then the second piece is. Ultimately, it's gonna be in the hands of. Town staff, boards and committees to kind of make this work a little bit. So if we can just convey.
Right.
The general idea without having to fill in all the details. Not spend a lot of time on on areas where we don't need to provide details.
So yes, yes and no. I think the yes part is is I agree, we don't need to settle all the details. I think the no part, from my view, is that we're gonna be relying on on town staff. And committees to implement whatever it is that we think is a great idea. And and if that operationally doesn't make sense, it's a lose. So I I don't wanna, I I don't want to propose something that just is on the face of it, not feasible.
I agree, but are we not getting input from? Town staff and. Select board and others at some point also.
We will. We we will. I think it doesn't happen all at once, though.
Sure, so presumably at that point, they can tell us this is crazy and we could take it off.
Sure. Okay, good, thank you. So the the. I'm proposing that on November twelfth, which is a Tuesday. That we we do clickers, remote voting and this. Australian ballot stuff. Australian ballot is just a private ballot. The the. The thing that was proposed is is more like the New Hampshire SB two referendum. But I would propose that on the twelfth. Of November. We need to discuss those things. We will have had. Output from the survey. Giving some guidance around how much the public thinks we should invest in remote voting. And the the referendum vote. And I think, you know, we just need to make sure that we have a a good discussion on clickers. Katie, please, and then Kristen and then Perishar.
I think it might make sense at that time, maybe to invite the folks who were the sponsors of those. Articles to come and chat with us. About. You know, the work they put into it and some of the, you know, pros from their perspective. To inform the conversation and, you know, so they're heard.
Yeah, yeah, good. Perishar, please?
So I I would recommend splitting those three up over the course of a couple of meetings. Because. Just think of how much time we spent on the survey. These are topics that are of interest to a lot of folks. And if we're gonna have a meeting that lasts about two hours. Two and a half, I don't know that we're gonna have enough time to do a justice. So perhaps. Putting it on the fifteenth. Eleven, twelve, splitting them up some way. I think they do justice to. To the folks that want to come in and provide their perspective.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, please?
Yeah, I'd like to hear about. How, I know we didn't get to necessarily tonight about the public forum because. I I want to make sure we have enough. Notification to the public. As well as, you know, the the proponents of the articles so that we hear from the people who are. You know, we we deferred all of that. They didn't get a chance to do this in the town meeting. So we're kind of basically recreating that that opportunity. To hear the, you know, presentations, then and also hear, you know, the back and forth. So we want to make sure it's on people's radar enough. I guess I would suggest. Having the electronic voting. Kind of separately. From the remote voting and referendum since. And that might help delineate in people's idea and in people's minds, these are things that need to go, you know, get special permission. And this is something we could implement on our own. But I guess I'd like to see. How these topics might come up in our public forum. As well.
Okay. Good, thank you. I'm gonna skip ahead. So so. I my takeaways from this are. Frontload shorter shorter overall length. Things, solutions that can impact shorter overall length. And the timeframe of town meeting twenty five. Frontload those for our discussions over the next two meetings. Separate clickers. From remote voting and and the SB two stuff. Yes, we want to make sure that. People with strong, strong interest in these. Are are, you know, able to come to the able to come to our meetings. And otherwise, there's still some some question as to sort of how. How to schedule this stuff. So I'll I'll take that and make a proposal. Given, given what we've talked about. And and take that as a point of action. Like to move ahead to the forum. So the forum. What's it gonna be? So what do we want it to be? What do we want to learn from it? Who's the audience for it? You know, some ideas, right? What does the public think about our town meeting would be is is probably the right thing? With the league, the legal woman voters presentation. I think that probably that story is about what we've been doing as a committee. And what we we're we're gonna what we recommended to the select board for town meeting twenty five, I think. But, you know, my focus right now is what are we gonna talk about and what are we gonna do in in October? You know, we could look at trying to focus on high interest topics, right? So but, you know, I think also. You know, that this discussions might be better served by happening in the framework of a committee meeting. And then, you know, I I I had a few ideas about. You know, sort of, I don't know what to call them, you know. Won wonkier questions around, you know, sort of fundamentals about about town meeting. That I'm very interested in, but I think, you know, the feedback I got was maybe not. For a forum. And so my proposal then, and I'll come to you in just a second, Kristen. Is that, you know, we have a focus group format. We see how many people show up. And that, you know, we split the room into groups of seven to ten people. That folks from our committee facilitate each group. The groups talk for twenty minutes or so. Once, you know, you talk for one to two minutes each. And then we come back and and we share what the different groups said to the whole to the whole room. And that there would be two questions and, you know, I don't know what they should be, but, you know, the question one for me is what would make town meeting better, right? Or is there something that would be better than town meeting for the function of 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 what, you know, a legislature in our town? And then the second question I think is, you know, what are the responsibilities, both civic and civil, of making town meeting work? What do we do that makes town reading work? And again, this might be too. You know, eggheady, but the I'm looking for two questions that we can use to sort of use as a backbone of a forum. So that's my proposal. Let me go to Kristen Hagerty, please?
I think that'd be great. I think my my main recommendation is that we. Have enough time for people to talk so that we limit the amount that we present. Whether we, you know, put it on a like a handout or something, but but we we. Leave most of the time for hearing from the public.
Very good. Thank you. Phil, please?
Eric, I think you're outlined for the forum is great, but. Let me just suggest that I think we may we may not be ready for it yet. Because we're still. Studying things. And I'm just wondering whether we should wait until we get through a few more things, including the survey, including these meetings that you're talking about having in November. Before we have a public forum. And I'm just afraid we might have to have another one. And maybe we push this back until we're we're really ready.
Thank you, Phil. I respect your perspective on this. I think. The idea with this forum would be that if the information would be inbounded, that's really hearing from the public. About their their perspectives and their experiences and not so much about testing our ideas. Which I think. I think we could get into that with the league with the league forum, but I don't know. Perishar, please, and then Katie and then Carmen.
So. Again, depending on the size of the room and the number of participants, we might have to. Make an audible with respect to breakouts because it can get very noisy if there's five or six going on in a. Small room, so it's just a logistical. We should keep in mind.
It's the hearing room at 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 town. The town.
That's what I suspected. So again, we'll have, we may have to call an audible. But I like question one because it's in my perspective, very practical. We're trying to get to, how do you make the meeting better, whether it's quicker, shorter? Faster decision making, whatever that might be. Question two. I struggle with that a little bit, but that may be just me. And in particular, the second part. I would just suggest a slight rephrasing. What do we do that makes town meeting work better, maybe? The word better at the end?
Sure.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Katie and then Carmen, please?
I also, I think, share. Phil's opinion, I I feel like it it feels a little bit rushed to me, given meeting every two weeks like this will come up on us like super fast. And I want to make sure we're prepared to have. A good meeting, especially if we need a handout or. Presentation. So I mean, maybe that's a consideration of whether we're ready, but if it's just kind of inbound information. I think it's a good opportunity for people to come and feel heard and agree with Parishar first question. I'm. Feel like I might have trouble facilitating the second question a little bit. So I do like the idea of getting, but I do like the idea of getting folks feedback on. What can make it better and maybe also what they like about town meeting currently.
Good. I would really welcome input from our group on what the questions for the forum would be. So, thank you. Carmen, please?
Just, thanks so much for all the work that you guys have put into this. And it's it's a wonderful proposal for format. I have two thoughts. One is. If you want to do this as kind of focus group format. You could think about. The library. Or Harvey Wheeler. As. Locations for this forum instead of the townhouse because both of those locations would work better, I think. Than the hearing room in the townhouse. The hearing room in the townhouse is a tough space acoustic.
Good, thank you.
And then the and then just the second thing I would say is I don't see anything wrong with having two forums. If you do one for inbound information. And another to socialize and get feedback on proposals. Gives you useful information to tweak the proposals. That is great.
Good, thank you. Phil, I see your hand up. I hope I didn't miss you. Okay, good, thank you. Good. So so again, any suggestions that people have around forum questions? I'd really welcome. I think, you know, we looked at the library. Shannon pointed out that the library closes earlier. So that 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 would be a nonstarter for an evening for an evening forum. But I think I'll check into the Harvey Wheeler as well. So so I'll take then as a an action and sort of do next steps of the forum. At this point, we're we're at eight forty four. I promised that we would stop. At eight forty five. I also, you know, we we've had. Scott Gillis in the call for 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 the full meeting. You know, aside from initial public comment. We've not had an opportunity for public comment. So. I feel it correct to give Scott. And others, my other members of the public, an opportunity to comment at this point. So I will ask if there are any comments or questions from the public with with respect to any of the topics that we've discussed this evening. And again, to be mindful of time. David Allen, is it your hand, please? And again, two minutes.
Thanks, Eric. Just matters of fact. Which do matter, after all. A misunderstanding has. Gotten circulated. Regarding the number of home rule petitions put before the legislature, there's been just one. Open town meeting towns. That's Wayland. And it's quite important for us to understand. Among other things, as we know, it's been mothballed. It's been put away. Second regards. Phil's observation about pilots. Factually, the only way that. We're going to be able to go forward, it looks pretty clear with legislature is with a pilot program probably of something like ten towns. Enough. So we can go listen to a debate. Thank you.
Thank you, David Allen. I guess last call for public comment from anyone. Good, thank you. Thank you. Sorry to rush through the meeting this evening. We covered a lot. I appreciate everybody's comments. I I am. I am learning as we go about what works and what doesn't work well. And thank you, everyone, for your time and your attention. And we'll meet again in two weeks. And with that, at eight forty six PM. I'm gonna declare our meeting concluded. Thank you.